I'd like to call the regular session meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Mayor Romaine.
Here.
Commissioner Hewitt.
Here.
Commissioner Sui.
Here.
Commissioner Kasabun.
Here.
May we please have Mr. Brian Robinson, Pastor Reverend Brian Robinson, to give invocation, and after that, sue the flag, may we please stand.
Would you pray with me? Gracious and loving God, we gather tonight thankful for the opportunity to serve our community. We especially thank you for the first responders of this city and the fire department for all of the amazing and brave work that they do. We're reminded that the one who taught us love for our neighbors as ourselves, he taught us to seek justice, mercy, and humility in all we do. So we ask that you would guide our hearts and minds as we deliberate on the matters before us. Help us to listen with compassion, speak with wisdom, and act with our integrity. And may the decisions bring peace and unity to this city. May we always look to work toward the common good, serving with a spirit of grace and humility. Thus we pray, in the name of your love. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the visible, with liberty and justice for all. This meeting is being conducted in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act of 1975, was advertised, posted, and made available to the public as required by statute. The Midwestern Clerk is directed to include a statement in the minutes of this meeting. Madam Clerk, are there any changes to the agenda?
Yes, Mayor, we have an ordinance to add, an ordinance amending Millville Code, Chapter 30, Land Use Development Regulations to rezone Block 124, Lot 1606 to AE Airport Enterprise District as recommended in the 2025 Master Plan Reexamination Report. We also have an ordinance to remove. It's ordinance for second reading, item number two, an ordinance amending Millville Code, Chapter 30, Land Use and Development Regulations to permit Class V Cannabis Retailer and Class VI Delivery License facilities in certain zoning districts within the city.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I will now be moving the presentation forward ahead of public comment on agenda items. Ms. Kears, I will not forget this time. I have visibly circled it and put a bunch of stars. So can we move on to presentations, please?
Yes, Mayor, we have the EMS badge celebration ceremony.
Chief, you're up.
Good evening, everybody. We have a group of special presentations here where we'll place additional honor on our EMTs. We are going to tonight swear in the EMTs, they're the full-time employees, and we're going to badge the per diem employees. The reason we're swearing in the full-time employees because they are, in fact, full-time city employees, and they hold a little bit different role in that than the others do. However, they're all EMTs, they all do a great job. And with the fire department, as well as the EMS and the police, you should, you know, help think about these people, how they do things for you every day. We're going to kind of place a little positive role on this, so I think we really should be doing something positive at the start of each of the meetings. But we have to come up with some things. There's things that are happening all the time. So we're proud of all these people, they do a great job every single day. They work long hours in this and, you know, have, like, they're busy, they're running all the time, oftentimes not able to get lunch or something like that as they're moving forward. So what we're going to do is, I'm going to call the full-time EMTs up to the front. You pick up your badge, buy your number, they're in order from one here to 17 down there. I think most of them are here, I don't know about the per diems. Michael Shervico, he's number one, been around the longest of the group. Joe Greensmith, number two. Janelle Stadnik, number three. Dave Chiozza, number four. Adrian Realhaus, which I'm hoping to be back in a minute, is number five. Ray Kleetz, number six. Jay Rodriguez, number seven. Karen Moore, number eight. Heather Harris, number nine. Megan Oliver, number 10, who she's on vacation, I believe. And Courtney Ayers, number 11. Jared Buxton is number 12. Sarah Testarone is 13. Gage Maldonado is 14. Walter Robinson is 15, with 30 years' experience. And Joe Facet, did I say it right? 16. And Elizabeth Tavinsky is one of our newest people in the group, number 17, so come on up front. Once you get them on, then the clerk will swear everybody in. Yeah. No calling 911 here. Need to get some help.
Right hand in the air, you're just going to heat out for me, okay? I say your name.
I.
Do solemnly swear.
Soward.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
That I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the same.
And allegiance to the same.
And the government established.
And the government established.
In the United States.
In the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
And partially and justly.
And partially and justly.
Perform all the duties.
Perform all the duties.
Of the office of the EMT.
Of the office of the EMT.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So be God.
So be God.
Congratulations.
Continue. Chief Weststein, go ahead.
Real quick, I just want to say that about six years ago, retired Chief Mike Lippincott approached me and asked for help to bring EMS into the fire department. It was a huge undertaking, it wasn't easy, but here we are, five years later, finally having a badge ceremony. I'm proud of you, proud of everything you do. Yeah, I worked on an ambulance with some of you, so I know exactly what you go through. But I am happy to say right now that after five years of hard work, we all wear the same patch on our arm. We're all the fire department, whether we're firefighters or EMTs, and welcome aboard, I'm glad we finally made this happen, so thank you. Keep up the good work, everybody.
Again, thank you from all of us, and we want to recognize some people who are part of the system, but also helped out. There's the fire department back there, they're very supportive of us, we get along well, we work in the same building now, and we eat together and, you know, watch TV together when there's not a call, which is rare. But moving forward, we also have Director Hewitt, I'll give him a chance to say something in a minute, Chief Weststein you just heard from. To make this happen, so people don't have to leave, the squads of Laurel Lake and Lawrence Township sent a spare unit into Millville to take calls for us while we're here. So I want to thank them, that's an undertaking on their part. And then Jay Arbuckle, which, when I caught back up, they were calling him Dan, and so Jay was an old rescue squad member many years ago, and so he supports us pretty valiantly with that, as being an alumni for the group. But one day I asked him, they were calling him Dan, and I asked him, because I hadn't seen him for like ever, and I said, "Where's Jay? What's he doing? He's that Jay, that's me, I'm Dan Jay, same name." So we worked out okay, but he's very supportive of us, we need help, he always shows up, he's around, and from the chaplaincy, we really appreciate him. So again, like I talked about, you know, we like to have positive things go on, we have them all the time, every day, and we could bring them forward, do some stuff. We do have one coming up down the road where we have a little superhero event for a little kid who was nine years old, called 911, walked through everything like he was an adult, and helped his grandmother be well. So we're going to bring him in, and we have a little bit of the 911 tape to play, it's going to be, you know, future time, but otherwise that, so.
Everybody's mostly all hit every point. As people know, in town, you guys are, just like all of public safety, you're running all the time. Sometimes you're running ragged, and I see it, I appreciate it. I stood at that podium to work to try and get this to happen, and I'm proud to stand up here and say thank you. Thank you, everybody.
Welcome to stay. Thank you all. Thanks, everybody.
I shouldn't have missed that.
I couldn't hear.
Well, at least they'd all be together, ready to go.
Okay, we're all here. We'll just talk to everyone. Okay. Welcome back. I will now have public comment on agenda items only, I did not forget. If you'd like to come to the podium, please state your name, address your concerns, and please limit your comments to approximately five minutes.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Ray Compari. As all of you know, I formerly served here in the city as the, in the role of City Administrator and Director of Economic Development. I'm here to speak on the agenda item for the Marketing and Social Media Contract Award. I'm not here to speak on behalf of the Associated Vendor Art C necessarily, but rather to speak on behalf of common sense. Not that many years ago, those tables in front of you were filled with members of the press to cover commission meetings. Their job was to capture the conversations, synthesize the information, fact-check the details, and then report out to the community through print media. Well, those days are gone. So however, much of our local news now comes from the hands of any fool with a keyboard and an internet connection. So without you commissioners deciding to take a proactive role in distributing accurate and positive information about the city, you will remain defenseless, constantly fending off the false and opinionated information generated on the internet. I can assure you that the consequences of the city having little or no social media presence and not marketing the good we have in the city will have and is having a negative impact on our city as a whole. The need for our city to have an active social media presence is now an informal requirement. Every progressive city across this country is taking an active role in reaching out to the community via social media to proactively promote a healthy economic and community image. During my time here, when I saw those empty tables up front, it was clear to me we needed to take some action to communicate progress in the city and to add some balance to the constantly seemingly bad press. To that end, we developed an RFP for a social media marketing project. The initial purpose was very singular and clear. One, to create official city social media pages on platforms like Facebook, LinkedIn, Twitter, et cetera, so we can control the story, we can tell our message. And secondly, and most importantly, was to develop positive content, professional content we can distribute on those platforms, which included video business features, business highlights, grand openings, photos, events, stories, et cetera, et cetera. So with that plan in hand, we sought a vendor through the city's RFP process. Art C was selected fairly, based on the merits of their proposal. To be clear and add a side note to this, Art C and Mr. Horn and I are not friends, nor did I even know him prior to our project, so I speak on behalf of the city in an effort to move that forward, period. To summarize the year-one result of this initial project, Art C did exactly what I asked them to do, and much more. I know for a fact that Mr. Horn and his team contributed many more hours and much more effort than they were compensated for in their contract. I would challenge anyone to find a comparable vendor who could produce the same professional quality outcome for the same contract amount. You will not find one. So social media pages were created, stories with excellent business videos were shared, and the feedback and the metrics of our project were overly positive. Good job by all. It was an excellent start to the city's first step into the active social media presence. But then, you stopped it, for a reason I'm still unclear. To my knowledge, the current, think about this, to my knowledge, the city is currently spending exactly zero dollars out of a $30 million annual budget to promote our current businesses and to attract new businesses. That's shameful. Further, my understanding that the dollar amount to support this contract award to continue this project is available in UEZ funds, it would not affect your city budget at all. Therefore, I am perplexed as to why this decision has gone on, and there continues to be some concern about moving this forward. It matters not to me personally whether you choose Art C or any other vendor with marketing and advertising expertise. I have no horse in this race, but to do nothing, to discontinue this project of promoting our city via social media, is extremely short-sighted. It disrespects the businesses we have here now, and it shows no effort to bring new businesses here, which we so desperately need. So taking some actions, such as this contract award to tell our story and promote our city, is common sense in today's world. I see it as your obligation. Promoting our city should be very high on your personal list of priorities as an elected public official. It should be obvious that you need to take steps to tell our story of Millville, rather than let others on the internet tell the story for you. I trust you'll make a logical decision, and thank you for listening.
Thank you, Mr. Compari.
Hi, I'm Ivy Wilson, I'm here speaking on the same issue. I'm a fine artist, graphic designer, photographer, and video assistant. I'm also part of the Art C team. In my many roles, I have learned that connections with great people are paramount to any businessperson's success. I've known Bill since I had my own gallery in Millville in 2011. Bill was covering A Third Friday and photographed one of my openings. Bill took the best photos of me and my work I've ever seen. Our professional relationship and friendship immediately began. Bill knew and cared about all the artists and community members in Millville. I've worked on a number of projects with Bill, including the International Cup Film Festival, Atlantic Care Healing Arts Documentary, and video promotions, developing marketing strategies for Art C and its future projects, and I currently update the extensive calendar for visitmillvilleNJ.com weekly. It's the best place to find out what's happening in Millville, all of Millville. Bill always works toward one goal, to raise the standard of beauty, aesthetics, professionalism, and quality of product. It's just what he does, he won't accept any less than the best he can do and knows how to do. That is what every strong community should want in a partner in promotions. It's what's needed, and it helps everyone in every section of the community look, grow, and feel stronger and better. I've worked with other business owners in Millville and other community members. Bill Horn and the Art C team are the go-to guys in South Jersey. They're dependable, highly skilled, up-to-date, and always improving. Bill knows through keen observation and networking, as well as experience, exactly what is needed and how to achieve any goal in his field of expertise. He also has an arsenal of experts and a talented team with unlimited potential to tap into. In the long term, there's so much Bill and his team can do if funded and given the opportunity. I've discussed and brainstormed with him on so many amazing projects and see him work so hard, and I have total faith that anything he sets out to do will be accomplished at the absolute best level comparable to the best in his field. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson.
Patricia Clark Kears, I'm here to speak on the same matter. I think Mr. Horn and Art C do a terrific job. Last year, I think there were like eight or nine events on a Sunday. One of them was Raise the River, and he managed to get to all the events, take great pictures, and posted them. And there's so much negativity on the internet, on these Millville sites, about Millville. We need something to counter it. And if you can have Mr. Horn work with our small businesses and with an Economic Development Director, they would just be a perfect fit and could really help move this city forward, so I encourage you to do it, especially with UEZ funds. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Kears.
Eric Nyman, Wildflower on High Street. I don't know that I necessarily have much to add to what everyone has just spoken about. I agree with all of it. I urgently implore you to renew the contract. I mean, Bill and Art C, they've always gone above and beyond the funding, you know, what they've been paid to do, you know. Last time I spoke about this, I think it was six months ago or more, Commissioner Watson kind of laughed in my face, like, "Oh, we're working on doing something with Bill. Six months later, let's do it." So last this commission said was that they were going to do something, and some of you have spoken individually about this. I can't say I speak for the entire downtown, but I think you'll be hard-pressed to find any local business owner who is against positive press and professional photography publicizing Millville. You know, we have a good, Wildflower has a good social media following, a good website, thanks to Holly City, Holly City Development Corporation, but, you know, sometimes we feel like we're alone in it, and Visit Millville NJ is something we can tag that puts the town in a beautifully positive light. So let's do this, let's renew it.
Thank you, Eric. Seeing no one further, I will close public comment on agenda items only. Bills?
Make a motion, pay the bills.
Second motion.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hewitt?
Yes.
Commissioner Kasabun?
Yes.
Commissioner Sui?
Yes.
Mayor Romaine?
Yes. Petitions and letters?
Yes, we need a motion to receive and file a letter from Atlantic City Electric regarding a vegetation management agreement for tree removal.
Make a motion.
Second motion.
Motion and second, petition and letter, item number one, any comments? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hewitt?
Yes.
Commissioner Kasabun?
Yes.
Commissioner Sui?
Yes.
Mayor Romaine?
Yes. Reports of commissioners, Commissioner Hewitt?
First, I'd like to make a motion to receive and file the Police and Fire Department report for the month of June 2025.
Second motion.
We have motion and second to receive and file the Police and Fire Department report for the month of June of this year. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hewitt?
Yes.
Commissioner Kasabun?
Yes.
Commissioner Sui?
Yes.
Mayor Romaine?
Yes.
I want to thank the commission for letting the EMT squad have their time. As I had said earlier, they had never even had an official swearing-in here in the city, and I appreciate the time for doing that, I appreciate them being here. Anybody who moves around through the town is always seeing our ambulances on the street. They're working folks, they're constantly working, just like the whole entire public safety team. It was mentioned, and I want to mention it again, we finally, it was one of the things I wanted to do when I got in office, we got the EMTs moved out of the building, it's on the curve of Columbia Avenue and Buck Street, Broad Street, sorry, and they are all as one, they're part of the firehouse, they are in the firehouse. All the equipment's there, there's some stuff stored over there and stuff, and in that process, we have moved OEM out of a combination police department and fire department area into that building, so that building is not sitting there going to waste. And I just want to, again, express my thanks to the entire public safety team, and that's all there.
Thank you, Commissioner Hewitt. Commissioner Sui, go ahead.
Sure, upcoming events, Play Streets is every Wednesday until August 13th on Pine Street, between Second and Third Streets, 10 a.m. to 2 p.m. We want to thank all the partners that made this happen, this has gone on for 10 years now, and we look forward to continuing this while we can. On Friday, July 25th, join us at Buck Park for our monthly Fourth Friday. We have community booths, games, music, and a lot more. On this past Saturday, July 12th, we worked with the railroad to clean up a long railroad avenue. I got tired of hearing excuses, why it couldn't be done, and so we just, I made arrangements so we could do it. So I asked for volunteers, we had four. We had Bob McQuade, Mary Messick, Dave Summers, and Tom McGinty, want a special shout-out to Mr. Summers for bringing his tractor, so that bigger items like mattresses and couches could be loaded up in the mini dump. I want to thank Mr. Robert Shepherd from the railroad, he made sure we were safe, he turned off switches so trains couldn't come by, and he was a pleasure to deal with, and we look forward to working with him in the future. So our cleanup mostly focused on railroad avenue, but Mr. Shepherd gave us protection in Center City to pick up big items between Vine and Pine. And what's interesting, it was a very hot, humid, nasty day. Not one person, the volunteer, complained about anything. The people that did complain, however, none of them showed up. So there are people that do things, and people complain about things. It's nice when they're all in the same boat. That's all, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Sui. Commissioner Kasabun?
We have, three major trees came down during these storms. One was on South 10th Street, Woodland and Sycamore, and Calores was this Sunday. They've all been cut up, cleaned, and hauled away. Oh, let's see. Estimated time to work to begin is Monday, 7/28, weather permitting. That will be for the Wade Boulevard flooding. The engineering department has done their jobs that they need to do, supplies have been ordered, so hopefully this is going to correct that problem that's been.
Arised.
Arising for quite a while, and with all this rain. Other than that, same thing, sinkhole repair on Glen Side Road, that's been complete. Sinkhole repair on Wedgwood Court is complete. Sinkhole repair on Sunset Boulevard is complete. They did stone and grade on Apple Place, that's completed also. This rain is killing the Streets and Roads Department. And that's about all.
Do you need to do the motion? Tax collector's report, please.
Yep, make a motion. Let me get this out, my way. Make a motion to receive and file the tax collector's report for the month of June 2025. Make a motion?
Second motion.
We have motion and second to receive and file the tax collector's report, month of June 2025. Thank you, Commissioner Kasabun.
Thank you.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hewitt?
Yes.
Commissioner Kasabun?
Yes.
Commissioner Sui?
Yes.
Mayor Romaine?
Yes. Do you have anything else?
I have nothing else.
Thank you. All right, let's do chronological order. Fourth of July, I hope everyone had a great Fourth of July. I attended Millville's Fourth of July ceremony, I stayed for about an hour, I successfully judged and witnessed the pie-eating contest by the adults, and the watermelon-eating contest that took by children, but not too small children, because we did have a choking issue a couple of years ago on the little seeds, but a great turnout. Always people come in as the sun sets, but the weather has been, weather was excellent for that property right next to the lake, and hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of people, when it did get dark. people, when it did get dark and right at nine o'clock promptly, and for over 14 minutes, hundreds of people watched and witnessed a beautiful display of fireworks. I want to thank you to the police department, all the parks volunteers, for keeping everybody safe and organized for the entire event. Like I said, it was a great turnout, and as well as for the music starting off, and then for Delirium for finishing up of the night. It was a joyous time to celebrate our country's history, and it will even be better next year for America's 250th anniversary. I also attended the opening ceremony of the Cumberland County Fair on last Wednesday. Fun fact about New Jer, it is New Jersey's first fair to begin the fair season of New Jersey. I did not know that, as well as the fair has been going on all the way since Lafayette Street and Bridgeton many, 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 many years ago. I was told that as well. I grew up on Cornwall Road, my entire life, it's always been there, so you learn something new. Seventy men, Dave Bailey, was there from the Legislature's 3rd District as a visitor. And kudos to the Cumberland County Sheriff's Department for having great operations throughout there, as well as Cumberland County Board of Commissioners for putting on a great event at the Cumberland County Fair this year. Thank you to Lawrence and Laura Lake EMS for covering the city of Millville while our EMTs got formally recognized. Thank you, Chief Lipic, and Chief Wetstein, for your kind remarks. I know that those, your departments work extremely well together, and I see them all the time, every time I drive back, drive by the fire station on Buck Street. You know, it's a great partnership that, and it's a great partnership that it is combined inside the fire department, and we do have our gratitude to devote to the EMTs and all the firefighters and all the public safety members. So thank you to Commissioner Hewitt for getting that handled. I do agree with Artsy. I worked with Bill. Bill has, and Eric, you should have said, the biggest thing that, you know, gave you most traction was all the wonderful videos that Artsy, when they did have the contract, and Bill went around to almost every single entity in the city and gave them a promotional highlight. Even the city of Millville, we have a promotional highlight video that's out there somewhere. But we need to have social media present in the city of Millville. You see Vineland commercials all the time. I get it, Vineland's twice as big as us. They have triple the budget. But doesn't mean we can't take a little part of UEZ funding or funding in general and to get either Mr. Horn or somebody of social media a contract for the city of Millville. It has to be done. I want it to get done because we need it to happen, and a day cannot pass where we do not have social media progressing the city of Millville. That's all of our jobs here are to progress the city of Millville. Here inside City Hall, the public outside City Hall, and everybody, all 27,500 residents, we all love this city, we all cherish this city, and we all want it to grow and succeed. And marketing is the number-one thing to do and succeed on in 2025 and continue in the future. Ordinances in the second reading.
Ordinance for second reading, item number one, an ordinance amending Millville Code Chapter 30, Land Use and Development Regulations to Rezone Block 290, Lot 1 to HC, Highway Commercial District, as recommended in the 2025 land use element of the master plan.
Make motion.
Second motion.
We have motion and second on ordinance in the second reading, item number one. There is a public hearing. If anybody would like to come to the podium, state your name, address your concerns on this ordinance in the second reading, item number one. Seeing nobody, I will close public hearing. Any comments?
Mr. Mayor, for the record, the planning board did issue a report recommending that this ordinance was consistent with the master plan.
Thank you, Brock. Any comments? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hewitt?
Yes.
Commissioner Kosaboon?
Yes.
Commissioner Sui?
Yes.
Mayor Romanek?
Yes. Ordinances in the first reading, please.
Ordinance for first reading, item number one, an ordinance approving and authorizing an application to the Cumberland County Roadway Department for first UMC of Millville to hold a coin drop on August 30th, 2025, at the intersections of Buck Shootum and Cedarville Route.
Make motion.
Second motion.
We have motion and second on ordinance in the first reading, item number one. Any comments? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hewitt?
Yes.
Commissioner Kosaboon?
Yes.
Commissioner Sui?
Yes.
Mayor Romanek?
Yes.
Ordinance for first reading, item number two, an ordinance amending Millville Code Chapter 30, Land Use and Development Regulations to Rezone Block 124, Lot 1606 to AE, Airport Enterprise District, as recommended in the 2025 master plan reexamination report.
Make a motion?
Second. Second motion.
We have motion and second for ordinance in the first reading, item number two. Any comments? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hewitt?
Yes.
Commissioner Kosaboon?
Yes.
Commissioner Sui?
Yes.
Mayor Romanek?
Yes. Resolutions, Madam Clerk.
Resolution, item number one, resolution requesting approval of items of revenue and appropriation, County of Cumberland Municipal Alliance for the Prevention of Substance Use Disorder.
Make motion.
Second motion.
We have motion and second on resolution, item number one. Is there any comments? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hewitt?
Yes.
Commissioner Kosaboon?
Yes.
Commissioner Sui?
Yes.
Mayor Romanek?
Yes.
Resolution, item number two, resolution authorizing the execution of an application to the New Jersey Urban Enterprise Zone Assistance Funds in the amount of $35,000 to fund the Millville UEZ marketing.
Make motion.
Second. Go ahead, Karen.
I second the motion.
We have a motion and second on resolution, item number two. Any comments?
Yes. When I had put this on the agenda, I don't know, I guess about six months ago, I expected it to pass without a problem. Guess I wasn't convincing enough to my fellow commissioners. Hopefully, your eloquent statements will serve a better purpose than my statements did before. Thank you.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hewitt?
Yes.
Commissioner Kosaboon?
Yes.
Commissioner Sui?
Yes.
Mayor Romanek?
Yes.
Resolution, item number three, resolution to award a non-fair and open contract, County Conservation Company.
Make a motion?
Second motion.
And with that, I have certifications of funds in the amount of $29,970, signed by Chief Financial Officer Susan Quinones.
We have a motion and second in certification of funds. Any comments? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hewitt?
Yes.
Commissioner Kosaboon?
Yes.
Commissioner Sui?
No.
Mayor Romanek?
Yes.
Resolution, item number four, resolution approving the fiscal year 2025-2029 consolidated plans and the 2025 annual action plan for the city of Millville.
Make motion.
Second the motion.
We have motion and second on resolution, item number four. Any comments? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hewitt?
Yes.
Commissioner Kosaboon?
Yes.
Commissioner Sui?
Yes.
Mayor Romanek?
Yes.
Resolution, item number five, resolution authorizing tax and utility adjustments.
Make a motion?
Second motion.
Motion and second. Any comments? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hewitt?
Yes.
Commissioner Kosaboon?
Yes.
Commissioner Sui?
Yes.
Mayor Romanek?
Yes.
Resolution, item number six, resolution authorizing septic system seepage pit closer than 20 feet from the right-of-way line at 113 Pine Road, Block 189, Lot 2289.
Make a motion?
Second motion.
We have motion and second on resolution, item number six. Any comments? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hewitt?
Yes.
Commissioner Kosaboon?
Yes.
Commissioner Sui?
Yes.
Mayor Romanek?
Yes.
Resolution, item number seven, resolution canceling cut-and-clean assessment.
Make motion.
Second motion.
We have motion and second on resolution, item number seven. Any comments? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hewitt?
Yes.
Commissioner Kosaboon?
Yes.
Commissioner Sui?
Yes.
Mayor Romanek?
Yes. Seeing no new business, we have now reached the public comment portion of our meeting. Anybody who would like to come to address the commission, please come to the podium, state your name, and address your concerns. Please limit your concerns to approximately five minutes.
Mary Messick here of Millville. Personally, I think it's a cry and shame that we had, at one point, a person who was willing and able to show the plus side of this town. But yet, we had a few that wanted to sit there and holler about the price. What's worth more, having people wanting to come to Millville, wanting to put businesses here so that we can grow, so we can have more ratables, or to be looked upon as the sore side of a city? I've stood here many a time, and I've said it time and time again. I've been to a lot of these commission meetings, and I have been appalled at the majority of the time that all's I see is a division. Yes, it's a cliche. United we stand, divided we fall, and that's about all we've ever done, is to fall, because we stand divided so much that nobody wants to seem to work together. And when we do work together, there's multiple times that this city has worked together. The citizens have come together due to fires, due to the heat, due to the exceptional cold. I understand homelessness can be a tragic thing to any town, any community, but at the same token, they are human beings as well. We've come together to do Code Blue so much that Millville set the bar for all Code Blues. That's amazing, but yet, this town is looked upon as though we should be cast aside, waiting for somebody to come by and pick up the trash. That's unacceptable. We need somebody in here that's going to shine on all the things we have. We've got roads that you can get material in and out. We've got a railroad. We've got an airway. We've got waterways. We've got a trade school that teaches all sorts of trades that are in high demand, but yet, nobody seems to know that they exist. And that's appalling, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mary Messick.
Thank you.
Rick Cobb, Millville. Well, thank you, by the way. Yes, we have been complaining about the railroad being cleaned up. I'm sorry that you guys felt like you were forced to do it by that last comment, but I do appreciate you guys going. And if complaining got it done, then we need to keep complaining, because that was going on for a while, and I noticed you said there was enough complaining, and that's why we did it. Shame on that, but great for doing it. And also, great that we're bringing back social media. What a great segue to that. If we had social media, maybe more people would have known about things like that. So it's very important. I appreciate you guys passing that. Kudos to you guys. It's much-needed. It's 2025. I would even go farther. We ever think about getting the signs out there that, you know, we're entry points in Millville where you can put different things on and coming in, once again, just to promote the city of Millville and let the residents know what's going on. But thank you for cleaning that up. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Eric.
Robert McQuade, Millville. What Sui also forgot to mention out there, there was actually a community drug center out there that was on the South Sixth Street area of that railroad track. It was a nice-built little bungalow they made through shopping carts and also couches and other items with an umbrella, with nice chairs and needles, OxyContin pills. They also had products that you would put into a nebulizer, which I found out that they could get high off of. So there was like a large, very large drug supply back in there. Street Parks Department gathered these items up and put them where they properly needed to be. Also was a gentleman that had a Jeep who also had a winch to help tear that down because Mr. Summers' tractor couldn't go over the railroad tracks because of the back of bottom, so it would tear it. But it was, that south side on Sixth Street of that railroad track was pretty bad. We also did, Summers actually started at Third and Fourth on the railroad tracks by himself with Samantha Cruz watching behind him with a railroad individual, and they removed stuff. I showed up around 8:20, and Dave was there about 8:00, so he removed those items too. We didn't get a chance to remove the two buckets supposedly had fish heads in them. We didn't check that out, but I'm hoping we could probably get rid of them later on this week or something. Somebody might need them for their garden. But that's a joke. But anyway, that's, I just wanted to let you know, he left a couple of things out, but there was the drug areas there. Big one. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McQuade.
Brian Griffiths, Fourth Street. Thanks for cleaning up Railroad Avenue. I didn't know you guys were doing it. I didn't even know you had to post it anywhere or where to find it. I was supposed to volunteer, or I'd have been out there.
I appreciate that.
Follow-up question for that would be, could, would we be able to have trash receptacles along that area at all, or that Third Street, Fourth Street, somewhere in that? That's about it. Thank you.
Closest trash receptacle would be at the park right there.
I don't think the people that are doing that will use trash receptacles.
Hi, good evening, Marissa Ronello. Commissioner Sui, you brought something up a little while ago. You said you put a shout-out for volunteers. I didn't see that shout-out. Myself, I would have volunteered.
Yeah, I appreciate that. It was online, and I mentioned it at the meeting.
This is where marketing really comes in handy.
Exactly.
But I'd like to make a suggestion, and my suggestion is to take it in a different route. And I hope the commissioners hear me on this when you decide to do a contract. Art is very important, and highlighting the businesses here is also very important. Mr. Horn is a wonderful photographer. I would like to see more emphasis on marketing. It's not enough to get 1,500 views. Anybody on a Millville page can get that with a post, as you see every day. So if you're going to take hold of the narrative and paint your city more positively, it's important to have a plan as far as what you're going to do with marketing. When this commission came in, I don't know if the rest of you, at least one of you commissioners, knows this, we had a Facebook page that had 50,000 followers already built into it, and I brought that to one commissioner's attention because there was something screwy with it, and I could have claimed that page, and so could anyone else. And somehow, that page went missing, and that was a real waste. So Mr. Horn did a lot of work trying to build up followers again, and I hope that page is used professionally as far as public relations. I think that if any of our department heads want to make a statement on any incident or emergency, rather than just speaking, perhaps they could speak with whoever the marketing person is, whoever your social media person is, and they could talk to Mr. Russell before putting a message out there that represents the city as a whole. So I hope you guys take that into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Marissa. Seeing no one else, I will close public comment portion. Closing comments of commissioners. Commissioner Hewitt?
Bill, congratulations. I know it took some work. I know I, congratulations. Again, thank you, public safety. Thank you, everybody. This kind of heat and everything, you got the guys out there doing their job in the parks, you got Water Department out fixing water leaks, doing their jobs, streets and roads, just thanks to everybody in the city. city. Folks, watch out when these rainstorms pop up. You don't know what this drop of water can do. We got lucky last night. We didn't have much. Had a heck of a lightning storm. But all around us, there was, there was high water, and it comes fast. Enjoy the next couple of weeks. Stay cool, and see you next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Hewitt. Commissioner Sewell?
Yeah, so I'm glad for the four volunteers that did show up. I'm sorry it wasn't advertised enough to get more. Will endeavor to fix that in the future. I do, however, see that the campaign season has begun. To imply that anybody was forced to get this started or get this done is total nonsense. You know that. So when you're running for office, you want to come up here and say complaints forced us to do something. Didn't force me to do anything. I saw excuses being made, and I wanted to show that it could be done, and it can be done. And it will probably be done in the future as soon as we can coordinate it. Now, for anybody that wants to volunteer, please, call the Recreation Department, 856-825-7000, extension 7394. And when we get a half dozen volunteers, we'll do it again. So I'm not forcing you, you're not forcing me, you're not forcing the departments. I certainly have better things to do on a Saturday morning, especially a hot nasty Saturday morning. Second, I want to send a shout, shout out to my friend Jim Quinn. For some reason, again, during the campaign season, he seems to be telling people, I lost a lawsuit, that I was suing him, and that I'm evil. And I get it, because there are certain candidates that he wants to promote and advertise, and he doesn't want to give equal time. I sent him a message requesting equal time, and instead of giving me equal time, he just stopped having people that are running for office available to talk. So for the other candidates, that, that's too bad. You would have had a better chance, the public would have had a better chance to be informed. Perhaps you guys can, that want to talk to him, can call him and ask him to remedy that situation. Again, thank you to the volunteers. I'm glad we got the railroad tracks cleaned up to as far as we did. We hauled out, I don't know, four or five truckloads of stuff in a little area. Thanks for bringing a tractor. I sure didn't force Mr. Summers to bring his tractor over. So thanks again, and with that, progress.
Thank you, Commissioner Sewell. Commissioner Casabun?
Okay, just want to say thank you to all the EMTs and first responders for your dedication and service. Thank you to Laura Lake for helping us out so their families could be here to see what they were doing. Also, thank you for the volunteers for the Railroad Avenue. That is a big eyesore, and it is something that needed to be done. Thank you, thank you. Also, if anyone is interested, Mrs. Messick, we do have Adopt a Road program. We have Adopt a Neighborhood program. We're Adopt a Drain program. All you need to do is contact the Department of Chris Finch at 856-825-7000, extension 7612. This is a great way to volunteer and help keep your neighborhood clean. And also, this saying is, I think, will fit for all of our EMTs and first responders. The meaning of life is to give life meaning. And with that, thank you. Enjoy your week.
Thank you, Commissioner Casabun. Ms. Messick, I appreciate you. I agree with your words that you have spoken here tonight. I appreciate your pictures. I appreciate you keeping up with the city. I appreciate you coming to every single one of these meetings. I appreciate you, Ms. Messick. Cott, thank you for your comments. I'm glad to have Art C. back. It was, you know, why it took so long, why it never did pass in February, I believe. I can't answer that. I was always a for, I, like I said, built such excellent work for the city of Millville in promoting it, and we will continue to promote the city of Millville. Bray, thank you for your words. You're always such a great speaker. When the time comes, you know, I know you're enjoying your life outside of City Hall, but maybe there is an opening, but no. McQuade, thank you for help volunteering. Thank you for all the speakers come here before. Brian Griffith, thank you. And yes, exactly like Ronello said, strategic marketing, that's the key, how to utilize it best. And I know that a TV commercial is not, you know, in that contract, but you know, that'd be the goal, to really market Millville on the TV, just like Vinland does. We work well together, Vinland and Millville, but it'd be nice to play ball with them in their own court every once in a while. I hope everybody, just like Commissioner Hewitt says, be safe during these torrential downpours, you know, get, you know, stay connected to your phone as much as possible, but like, do take your mental breaks. But it is very dangerous out there in these monsoon downpours that we are having. And I know they can be so sparse as it downpoured right on City Hall earlier today, but the east side of Millville didn't get a drop of rain. So be very careful out there. Enjoy yourselves. And as Commissioner Sewell was saying, you know, with Mayor Quinn, you know, there's no way for candidates to promote themselves. And I just look up, and you can probably go to the informthevoteNJ.com and find out all your information. But have a great day. Enjoy it. And side note, next meeting will be?
Wednesday, August 6.
Wednesday, August 6. So please keep that in mind. I'll come here on a Tuesday. Nobody will be here past 4:30. Have a great day, everybody. Motion for adjournment?
Motion?
Second.